Going to order regular city council meeting for the city of Hayden, Idaho. It is Tuesday, September 9th, 2025, 5:00 p.m. Maybe we get a roll call of council members, please.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Yep.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Tom, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll roll into a proclamation. Constitution week, now therefore I, Allen Davis, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of City of Hayden and the state of Idaho, do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23, 2025, as Constitution week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that are framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardians of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Next item is a consent calendar, which consists of approving the August 18th, 2025, joint city council and planning a zoning commission meeting minutes, approval of August 19th, 2025, city council special meeting minutes, approval of August 26th, 2025, city council special meeting minutes, approval of August 26th, 2025, city council meeting minutes, approval of August 29th, 2025, city council special meeting minutes, approval of PZE-25-0043, Woodman subdivision preliminary plat written decision, approval of PZE-25-0055, North Atlas industrial subdivision preliminary plat written decision, approval of Big Sky Corporation change order number eight for H6 sewer force main protective measure, ratification of the August payroll, and approval of bills for payment. Are there any questions regarding the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
I would like to remove item E, approval of the August 29th special meeting minutes for discussion later.
Okay. Any reason why you didn't reach out to me ahead of meeting for that?
That's not a requirement. Thank you.
Okay, we'll remove item 2E for discussion. Anything else?
Not a question, just more of an observation or a comment. And I've already spoken to Lisa about this. The city spent $550,000 to po asphalt on paving. I know that the council approved the expenditure earlier in the year. I want to ask, would it be an imposition if we could get a presentation or a quickie like on just what was covered with new asphalt or chip seal?
Do you want that ahead of the decision, or do you want that during?
Oh, no, 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 no. I'm good with it because I know we talked, just for information purposes, you know.
We can certainly do that. I can look.
I don't want to make it a big deal, but if you could like spend five minutes with a pretty picture or something.
Do that under reports.
I just can't do it right now.
No, I knew that. I knew that. So maybe next meeting.
But we can.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions?
Would anybody be interested in hearing that?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
I have one more comment.
Mm-hmm.
In the reading of the list of items in the consent agenda, I didn't hear 2A mentioned, August 18th minutes. Was that included?
I thought it was.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we pass the consent calendar as read.
Second. Just a note, Councilman White requested 2E be removed. So do you mean 2A through D and F through J, or A through J?
Oh, with the inclusion that item 2E would be removed from the consent agenda for discussion later on.
Okay, that's the motion amended. Second. Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Sure.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to visitor public comments. Abby, do we have any?
None have been turned on.
Okay. We will then discuss item 2E, which is approval of August 29th, 2025, city council special meeting minutes.
Okay. So, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to state that I believe it's important for the public record to reflect the exact statutes that were cited in the meeting so that anyone reviewing the minutes has full context. So adding them supports clarity and transparency. So therefore, I move that the city clerk be asked to include in the minutes the two Idaho statutes that were referenced at the beginning of the August 29th executive session. Idaho Code 74206, which requires a two-thirds vote to enter executive session, and Idaho Code 50602, which permits a mayor to break a tie. Thank you.
I don't see a problem with that. I'll second your request.
Well, is that a motion or just a request?
It's a motion. I moved.
Okay. And once again, any reason why that wasn't communicated to the clerk ahead of the meeting?
Well, Mr. Mayor, sometimes things come up to our attention on the day that we're getting ready for the meeting.
Okay. So there is a motion to amend the meeting minutes. Fonda, is there any issue with what's being requested?
One thing I would ask is that the clerk go back and listen to audio and just make sure that the two statutes that were just cited in the motion actually match what was mentioned in the meeting. We don't all have a photographic memory to remember everything that was said, so if she can match those up, that would be helpful.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion?
I just have, from my memory, it sounded like there was a presentation of an Idaho statute by Councilmember White, and then our legal counsel, Fonda, stated another statute. And so, in my memory, both were stated. Now, so the only issue is that you want to make sure that the minutes reflect that those two are stated, and I just have to ask why?
For record and clarity and transparency, just like I said.
Are you still disputing that we didn't go into executive session correctly?
This is not a dispute. This is a record.
I'm just asking a question that relates directly to it.
That wasn't my motion. My motion was that these items be put in the minutes.
Right, and I'm just wondering why.
I'm not debating that right now.
So you have no?
Mr. Mayor, I ask that my motion be addressed properly and not contested.
No one's contesting it. I'm letting you guys work this out, as I do with many things, including when you have something to say. I think Matt's question is reasonable. If your answer is just because that's the way you want it, then you can just state that.
That's what I stated.
So just to be, my understanding is that you're, because I've read where people are saying that we went into executive session by not following the Idaho statute. Is that your position?
I am not taking a position on that at this time. At this time, I am merely asking that the minutes support what was stated in the meeting.
Right, and that was the issue, and I'm just questioning what your position on your issue.
My position is not relevant this time. My position is that I want these in the minutes.
All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember DePree.
Sure.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Okay, our next item is a public hearing for new and increased fees for city services.
Mr. Mayor, are we going to do the appointment?
Well, there's a public hearing ahead of it.
Okay.
Sorry, I had this all queued up, but it must have reset.
Oh, you're right. I'm sorry.
Okay, for the members of the public, staff is going to present any public comment. It will then be allowed to and directed to council. Then we'll close the public hearing, then council will deliberate and potentially make
Oops, sorry. As mentioned by the mayor, this is the requirement in order to address fee increases that meet the threshold under Idaho Code. So this hearing is meant for an opportunity for the public to bring forward their concerns or issues related to the adoption of those fees. That particular code section is mentioned under Idaho Code as 631311A, and those specific areas that require the public hearing are when new fees are contemplated or when fee increases are in excess of 5%. And as mentioned, the public hearing is for the purpose of hearing public comment regarding the proposed fee increases beyond the limits prescribed in Idaho Code. Council has presented the draft fee increase and notice of publication at our August 12th regular meeting, and the hearing was properly noticed in accordance with Idaho Code on August 28th and September 4th. Included in the notification were any fees that were, hit the threshold of being new or in excess of 5%. So if council recalls the fee increase, or the last year's, when we redid the fee schedule, we broke the fee schedule into several tables. Recreation was one of those tables, and so as we go through the summary of fee increases, I'm just going to refer to the tables as they're in the fee schedule. So if you, and you have a copy of that, it was in the public record online. So as we work through these, I don't have the number, table number here, but it does go in numerical order. So the first one that has a fee increase or change is under recreation. In this case, it's adopting a new fee relative to a new sport opportunity within the city. And then under the events, we really are looking at, in the evolution of our event permitting, realizing that there really are differentiations between the length of time for reservations and the impact on city staff. So we've addressed that as well. So under the, so excuse me, those are new fees. This is increases to fees. On those two tables, we have an open gym increase. That's to really identify, in this case, the per participant. That wasn't clear on the last one, so because it was a notational change that could affect or could be construed as an increase, we cited it underneath there to be clear that one way or another, it was a potential increase affecting the limit under Idaho Code. And then under our basketball, you'll see an increase of $5. Again, that's likely tied to and relevant to the increases we're seeing at the school for renting facilities. And under events, we have the vendor electrical fee. This is another note that really, again, needed to be addressed as we navigated different types of events that needed different types of electrical needs, that the electrical fee be based on the electrical outlet that they're using. The next table is our sewer table. We're looking at increases here. This is the one that has probably the most impact across our customer base, and that is the sewer residential and commercial cap fee. This is a fee increase. This increase is directly attributed to the Hayden area regional sewer boards increase that they did recently as they encountered a new facility with new upgrades. They reassessed their cap fee and looked to bring that in alignment with the cost of the increases to their facilities. And then the monthly sewer rate will look to increase as well, and it's meant to offset, again, those cost increases against Harb's budget. The city saw a very slight increase to our collection system, and when we think about the totality of that rate increase, I think it's less than 3% associated or attributed to the collection system. The remainder of that fee increase is really geared towards increases at Harb's level of adoption of their budget. Once council moves through the public hearing process, the way that you would adopt your fees is by resolution. So staff has provided you a draft resolution, and that is later on the agenda for the benefit of the public that's here to testify. You would testify your concerns or your comments to the council, and they would take action by adoption of the resolution later on in the agenda. Just as a means of reference, staff recommends adoption of the fees to become effective on October 1. This is in concert with the adoption of the budget new fiscal year. So that gives us theoretically, past tonight, enough time to update our fees across the spectrum of where our fees are located within the city. We generally provide a recommendation, and staff does recommend approval of the resolution adopting the new fees and providing for fee increases to tables 2, 3, and 9 of the city's fee table. So that's there for your reference if you so choose to need it. I don't know what this is. It was a leftover in the template. So again, the public comment is encouraged to attend and provide comments to council regarding any proposed fee in excess, so here to hear those, and then I'm standing for any questions.
Any questions for Lisa? Okay. Do we have any public comment?
No public comment.
Anyone in the public want to comment on fee increases? Okay, for the record, no one is, so we're going to close the public hearing. And I misspoke, we're not going to have deliberations or decision because this was just the public hearing. So we're going to move on to item 5A, which is consider approving Julie Colianjo's appointment to the Veterans Commission. Is there any discussion, or would someone like to make a motion?
Sure. I would motion to approve Julie Colianjo's appointment to the Veterans Commission.
Second.
Okay, the motion is second. Any questions on the motion being made? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Yes.
Okay, related to our public hearing, now we have the action item, which is the resolution adopting update to fee schedule. Does council member have any comments, or would someone like to make a motion?
Am I, just a question for Lisa, probably, Allen, the increase in the capitalization fees and the rates, that's to cover future projects that require a great deal of expense. Is that correct?
Not specifically. The capitalization fee is a fee charged to new connections, and what it does is it takes your total amount of hookups remaining in your facility divided by the total cost, and that is essentially the reimbursement for those investments made. And then the rate increases is to offset the Harbs, most of it is to offset Harb's budget that is increasing relative to some of the planning and projects that they're contemplating, so.
Okay, so just the rate increases is planned for that, right?
The rate increases cover operational expenses, and cap fee covers your connections, so your reimbursement of your investment made at the treatment plan.
Okay, thanks.
There is a recommended motion in the memo, although it doesn't have the date, but as Lisa pointed out, she's requesting that if you approve this, it take effect October the 1st of this year.
You need somebody to make a motion, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I will motion that we approve resolution for the city of Hayden, Cootney County, Idaho, adopting a scheduled fees for services provided and regularly charged as set forth by the city council and/or provided for by Hayden City Code.
Effective?
Effective October 1st, 2025.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Maybe we got a roll call vote, please.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Yep.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Okay, our next action item is Simco Construction Change Order Number 6 for the H6 Sewer Lift Station Project Final Connections. Allen?
Mayor, council, we put this change order on new business because it has, it's a little bit different than a lot of change orders. A lot of changes are more directly related to unanticipated work items that are encountered during the construction process. With this change order, we had four projects that went on to get the H6 lift station basin up and running, including Phase 1 gravity sewer, which was completed last summer, Phase 2 gravity sewer, which is weeks away from being completed, the lift station, and, excuse me, and lift station, and then the force main project. And once those are completed, there's work that has to be done to bring that system online. In other words, we have, the sewer today is heading to H2, and that has to be redirected into the H6 basin. That can't be done until all four of these projects were on the books get completed. At the time we were doing the work, we had no idea when, how, or which project would be, which project would be in what place as far as completion date. In other words, is this project going to finish first or last? At this time, we know that the lift station project will be the last project to get completed, and therefore, we talked to the lift station contractor and asked him if he would be willing to make these connections instead of going out to a whole separate project and bidding process. And he was, said that he could make that, he could make that happen. So we talked about, and he gave us fair prices to get this work done. It actually is quite a bit of underground work. It's deep. It's in a confined space, so we have to, they'll be kind of like mining down to these locations and doing the work inside of a small box. And so this is necessary just to get, to make all the connections, there's three of them, that have to be made in order to bring the whole system online and take the sewer that's coming down the H6 basin lines today, bypassing into H2 and bringing it into the new H26 facilities that we just are going to complete this fall. So if there's any questions.
Any questions for Allen?
So that's the $95,000, right?
Yeah.
Can you refresh my memory? What was the almost $81,000 that was taken out of the contract previously?
There was a number of, a number of change orders on that, but the contractor looked at it and gave us some ideas on some savings. Some of those were valve types that were in, suggested different valves that were less expensive and.
Okay, I think I remember that now.
There was.
Order control and coating system who also looked at during construction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
She was involved in this directly, so. And between the coatings and the order control, we came up with the savings on the project. It was around $88,000. And then bringing this back in, it brings the project from its original bid, just almost $15,000, only $15,000 over, which is really only about 0.4% of the project cost, which is a really good price.
How does that stack up with the projected, because I can't remember this?
This is, right now, this would be my projected final cost. We typically plan for 4% to 5% change orders. We're a tenth of that.
Okay, so in other words, under.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And this is truly extra work. It's not, I mean, it's completely extra work outside.
Any other questions? Thank you, staff. Wonderful, good answers. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mayor. I like the motion that we approve the change order number 6 with Simco Construction for H6 Lift Station Project Final Connections.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Is there any discussion on the motion being made? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Our next item is, council will consider purchasing a surplus street sweeper by the Coeur d'Alene School District.
Just be clear, it's to offer, to sell.
Yeah.
Consider offer to purchase.
School District offering to purchase, all right. Thank you.
It does read kind of funny in the memo. I was like, wait, are we buying or are we selling?
Yeah, the school district, as was included with your packet, provided a written request for an offer to purchase the piece of equipment that has been surplus by the city, and that we did put it up to auction, and it did not receive that bid, any bid, so at this point, council can deem to do whatever they want with that piece of equipment. And so, it's staff's recommendation, and we think it's a good gesture to our local agency, adjacent agencies, to offer it up to them, and they are interested, very interested in that. Happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. How old is it, and do we have the idea what we pay for?
You surplus this already, so I assume that came with that information, so I don't, I don't have it, I didn't have it available.
I don't have the age. It was, we had, it was here before. We purchased our new sweeper the year I got here in 2016, and it was deemed at that time that it was probably not necessary, but we hung on to it. We have used it a little bit, but it's now, it's not getting utilized. We don't see it being utilized, and so it's really taking up space, and it's a great opportunity to provide service to, a great piece of equipment to another public agency, so.
You can get, you back that information if you like, but we don't.
That's all right. I just, if we had it, we'd have it.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move that we accept the bid from the Coeur d'Alene School District to sell the surplus street sweeper for $13,500.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? We got a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DePree.
Yep.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Okay, we're moving on to reports. City administrator report and calendar review.
Yeah, so I gave council kind of the monthly overview of budget where we sit from budget to actuals, so you'll see the last two months shown on there. We are, I am working with staff to project out the fiscal year end. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to sit down with you. You'll see we're pretty close in total between revenues and expenses. My suspicion is, is that we'll crest over that expenses exceeding revenues, but primarily attributed to the enterprise funds because much, if you look back in fiscal year '24, you'll see our revenues exceeded our expenses significantly, and that was due to the fact that that money was taken in the previous year and spent in this year. So that correction will happen over those two fiscal years, so. But overall, I think we're doing fairly well. We expect to end the year, you know, considering everything that we went through this last year and purchasing land that wasn't planned and purchasing property relative to the Ramsey Road project, we're going to end the year pretty good. So my hat's off to the staff for doing a good job of not having at least the general funds expenses exceed revenues, so. Hoping to show you what that end is by next month, so.
Any else?
Yeah, sorry. So if you have any questions there, then I just wanted to give you an update on a couple things. There's a ribbon cutting scheduled right now, I believe on September 23rd, tentatively for Ramsey Road. You might put that on your calendar if you have an interest. I don't have a time yet.
It'd need to be in the morning.
Sorry, what?
It'd need to be in the morning.
So sometime in the AM. We'll get you more information, but just maybe mark your calendars if you'd like to come do the ribbon cutting, or participate in the ribbon cutting. And then Hayden Lake Watershed Association, you should have received an email from the clerk on September 13th, will do a ribbon cutting for the kiosk that they built down at Honeysuckle Beach. And they are, I believe, putting in the last piece of that, informational piece that they had made for it behind one of the glass pieces, and as such, then we'll present that through that ribbon cutting.
What day is that?
September 13th, and you should have received an invitation. Tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. in council chambers, there will be the impact fee committee meeting to talk about whether or not they'll be recommending any adjustments to impact fees coming forward.
I have a question. Will that meeting be video recorded?
I don't know. I don't believe so. We haven't, to my knowledge, done that in the past, so.
Okay, thank you.
The September 19th is. The September 19th is a big day for us. It's the day we expect to close on the Public Works Facility property, so we're looking forward to seeing that completed. And then just a couple other highlights that are worth noting is the, so we have the informational kiosk that the Hayden Lake Watershed Association installed, but we also today installed a new kiosk for the pavement. So that happened today, and so that was a big upgrade to that facility down there. So looking forward to seeing that progress on that, sort of solve some of our problems that we're having with the previous one. And then the generator, you may have seen it. It's hopefully going to be finished up and ready to go here. We're, they're gonna, I think they have to do some last minute, or last touches, I guess, to finish that up, and then they'll test it, and then it'll be ready to go. So I would like to also give the floor over to Alan Soderling, Public Works Director, to maybe give an update or answer any questions you may have on some of the Public Works projects.
Thank you. So we had four projects, we're part of the sewer project, and like I said, one of those got done last year, but there's three of them taking place this year. First one, over is the Phase 2 Gravity Sewer, which is part of the H6 Basin, Dakota to Wyoming on Ramsey Road. Contractors received a substantial completion on that on August 18th, and contract's planning to bring, to being done at the end of next week with all punch list items. So that'd be able to finalize that on the 18th of September. The original contract amount on that was $2,733,350.83. The anticipated final contract amount is $2,766,850.35. So that's about a $33,500 increase, which is 1.2%. That would have been a great, a great number for a construction, so. I don't anticipate that going any different than that, but we're not done. There's still a week left, so. Second project I'd go over is the H6 Force Main Project. This was a joint project between the city and Harbs where we were putting in, Harbs needed to put in a replacement pipe for their 16-inch line. It's being done in the same trench at the same time. The contractor finished up the final connections, valve access points, and patching basically this week. There'll be some work that was on one of the change orders, Change Order 8, which is to mount. We had the pipe that went in shallow to miss some utilities and to get the proper cover over it. We're going to just bring in some dirt, mount it up, grade it, seat it, make it look nice. So he'll be getting that done over the next week or two, and we would anticipate that project would be done in less than three weeks. The, that, the cost, this cost includes both the H6 and the Harbs 16-inch replacement project. The original contract amount was $2,892,888. The estimated final contract price is $2,933,522.97, which is a total cost increase of $40,700, which again is 1.4% increase, which is still way below the typical average you would see on a construction project. So I'm real happy about that. The third sewer project we'll talk about is the H6 Lift Station. The original work, let me see, ongoing work is proceeding. All the concrete structures are been, the reported plays are done. There's a great big on the corner of Dakota and Ramsey. It's quite a big structure in the field there. The contractors are currently, starting with all the electrical work on that, got all the concrete work done and tested and passed. So they're going to start that. There'll be ongoing work here until probably around the end of November, at which point it will be done. At that point also, that's when all, that means all the other work will be done. We're ready to turn that over, turn it over, and that was the point of the last change order we just discussed. To allow him to go and say, we're going to bring all this stuff in, and it'll be flowing into our new lift station and being pumped to the Harbs at that point. The original contract on that was $3,098,410. We're anticipating that will be ended $3,112,788, which is $14,378 over the original contract, or 0.4% increase, which is tiny. We are a lot farther away from being completed on that, so that one has the biggest potential for something to come up that we're not aware of between now and completion towards the end of November. But right now, that project's looking really good, so. That's those projects. We have the Ramsey Road Extension Project, which we're hoping to have a ribbon cutting here shortly. All the curb sidewalk paving is done. The streetlight installation is wrapping up with a vista. The swales are being shaped and topsoiled as we speak. Well, maybe not now, later in the day, but. The swales are being, the back slope for the sidewalks and topsoil on those to shape up behind the sidewalks is being done ongoing right now. Staff is working on scheduling ribbon cutting, which we just brought up. Final opening should be happening shortly after the 1st of October. I don't have a budget status on that right now. I do know that the money that the city and Hura provided that we set aside for this project, we're still under that dollar amount, so I can provide that information. And we currently have all the right of way for that project, and so everything.
Closed.
Looking up.
I wanted it done before it got done, and happy to say we did that, so.
So, any questions on any of that?
Questions for Alan? Alan, I have something for you to consider. Just popped in my head, not putting it on the spot. You did a very good job this year. Staff did a very good job this year. At the beginning of the Ramsey Road Extension or Project Construction for this year, with a map showing, here's when we're going to close, here's when we're going to, you know, move things around. Maybe at the beginning of the summer and at the end of summer, and by that I mean the construction season, do this, a similar thing where you say, here are the big projects we expect to do this year, and at the end, here's the ones that were completed, and then maybe talk to the ones that weren't. Again, just a suggestion.
I can do that, and I'll put out, I'll put.
Not this year, just.
I'll put the street overlay projects on there, too.
Yeah, just like real high level, you know, if we're going to tear up roads or.
We can do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I'd just like to say, I went to the roundabout on Lancaster. We drove around it. It just looks really beautiful, and, yeah, I just want to commend you guys for all the hard work you did. Thank you.
Contractor Interstate Asphalt is the prime contractor, and they have done a phenomenal job on that project, so.
And I like that there's no forest in the middle of the roundabout.
You like the big rock?
I like plain, yeah. It looks safer to me. Thank you.
Lisa, anything else?
Just one last thing I'd like, when we get to the request for future agenda items, I've had some conversations with some of the council members individually. It would be great if during that time, we could have an honest conversation about the effectiveness of this section of the agenda and how we can work to improve on delivery of that. So with that, I would leave it to you to decide if you want to have that conversation, then.
No, I think it's good. You and I discussed a month or two ago removing it, and I think it just kind of fell through the cracks.
I think, I think we need to bring it to the.
Was the report?
Agreed.
Oh, the request for future.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was something we broke out of. We were evaluating its effectiveness. Do we have anything for law enforcement? Again, not to put staff on the spot. We had a great process. We had a regular presence once a month. We got a report, we got a brief, we got to ask questions. Is there a way for us to reach out to the command staff and ascertain whether that's going to continue consistently or whether we just dropped off the agenda?
I certainly am hoping that we'll get back to that, but I can't be certain right now. We need to get through where we sit right now with the county.
Okay. Any reports from council?
Sure.
Go ahead, Ed.
Just a comment. You know, we're very often discussing about the aquifer and the condition and level and things like that. And you may have seen last week, I guess it was, within the last week, I believe it was Washington State did a study that was in the paper about the quality and of the, and the levels.
It's in today's newspaper.
Is it in today's?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd see, yeah, I'd seen it. It seemed like a couple of days ago. But anyways, and the study is showing that the Spokane Rafterm Aquifer is in very good condition, quality of water and levels of the water. There's some issues going on over in Washington, apparently, where they, I guess, another aquifer to the south.
Tri-city area.
Yeah, but according to this study, they're saying that the aquifer is in very good shape.
Okay, moving on. Is there any requests for future agenda items?
Talk about that one, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm hearing none, but to Lisa's point, I guess staff's looking for some guidance whether a request for future agenda items should retain, be retained on the agenda, and what council would like to see for a process. I know as of Thursday, we had three discussion items that were brought up in the past. And between Thursday and publishing the agenda, they all fell off. So I can understand staff's perspective that we're a little wonky right now. So please give us your thoughts.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think this would be a great addition to a procedures manual, that if we wanted to bring something forward that needed to be done, what the correct procedure or the best way to go about it would be.
So I can tell you in the City of Sandpoint, their process is that they have a form that if a council member wants an agenda item, they outline what the agenda item, the name of the agenda item, the purpose for the request, and then as long as they get another council member to sign off on that, so two council members sign off on it, then it goes on a future agenda. And they also put on the form the requested timeframe that they'd like to see it, and that goes to the mayor, and they don't have a city administrator any longer. But that, that is their process, so it doesn't clog up a council meeting, and it can be discussed behind, you know, as the agenda's being set. That's to what items go on, but two council members sign off on that.
How many council members are on the Sandpoint?
Six.
Council.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So if I heard you right, if I wanted to bring up something as an agenda item, I would go to at least two council members and.
One more. You plus one.
Not a quorum?
No.
So I would go to one other council member, give them my pitch, they would sign off on it, and then that would.
That's one procedure. That's just one process.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
That's what they use, yes. Staff recommends that it would be helpful, especially if we're the ones trying to better understand the outcome of the request, that we would meet with you one-on-one to hear your idea and to talk it out. And this came as a result of the last request. We had three items that sort of rose to the surface by three different council members, and staff, myself, was left wondering, what is the timeframe? What is, you know, what is it that we need to do? And, and then we were getting in conflict with potentially what the motives were of the individual seeking that. So I find it helpful to know that we can have those conversations.
Okay.
But whether or not you want to adopt a more direct policy about support from other members on the council, that I guess is a prerogative that we would need to understand better, so we could write that, so.
Other comments?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of like what Sandpoint does, and I like what you're saying here, especially the communication between the mayor and the city administrator and the council is key. And taking that opportunity to have those communications.
Many times, a conversation around something can resolve itself through information that may be available that wasn't available that night. And so the question then becomes, how much of that needs to come back in the open session versus just being cleared up?
Well, it's, it's that way with, with so many, not just this future agenda items, but so many other elements of the agenda, that if things are communicated prior to, you wouldn't have the wonkying up, I guess is the term that was used, of the council. If things could be discussed and placed prior to the meeting, it would be a smoother process.
Well, I'm pointing the council member also who has the agenda item request to the appropriate department head or city administrator, whoever, needs to maybe have that conversation first, because I think it's also notable that even in Sandpoint with this formal process, probably only 50% if that end up on an agenda, because that council member's questions all get answered. The other 50%, they really didn't need an agenda item. They just needed a question and answer session to figure out what was going on that led them to believe that there was an issue. But with the last scenario where we had three different, three separate individual requests by three separate council members, bringing the question forward left me wondering what I needed to do to tee up the conversation so that it was effective. And I found myself sort of spinning. I wrote three memos, provided three different information, then met with an individual over that, which found out that that wasn't necessarily ready. And so I spent a fair amount of my day, half a day, pulling together all that information to have it not effective. So I, I'm just giving you what it feels like on my end when I'm not clear what the direction is and what the expectation that staff will have as a result of that request.
It seems to me we could have a simple flow chart of a council member has something they want to potentially put on the agenda. The second step would be then to be directed to the appropriate director to have the conversation. If they, if the council member leaves that conversation still wanting that, then they could fill out the form, get the second council member to do it. Then would it go to the mayor, or is it automatic?
It just goes on the agenda.
Just goes on the agenda.
I would, I would ask, I guess, the council, so I don't, I feel bad for the staff or interfacing you at random points along the way about your question that you would just go through me and then we would set that. It should go through you to point to the. But that's not how it was presented. Just, so I wanted to make sure I reiterated that component of that. That's a strong importance for me.
Does that seem like a reasonable process to council?
I, I'm not totally clear on what the process is. Would, would you?
We could put it on a piece of paper.
I can bring it back to you guys, so you're good with that. I just, I appreciate the ability to talk through this, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on future agenda items? Our next item on the agenda is an executive session. Reporting Idaho Code 74-206-1F to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation for controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion that we enter into executive session based on Idaho Code 74-206-1F.
Second. Any discussion? Maybe a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember DePreez?
Yep.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute recess and go into executive session.
We set up where this, because I don't know what.